Let's thank God for this evening, thank Him for His grace, thank Him for His mercy, thank Him for all that He's done for each and every one of us and for our community. Lord, we thank You for everything. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
All right, Ms. Becky Rowe called.
Mr. Ross Burgord?
Here.
Ms. Rachel Ellander? Mr. Robbie Liner?
Here.
Mr. Clarence McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. Jan Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Trevion Smith?
Here.
Mr. Barry Soudier? Mr. Wayne Thibodeau?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Becky. Conflict disclosure. A reminder of commissioners that at any time tonight a conflict of interest exists, arises, or is recognized as to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and to recuse himself or herself from participating in a debate, discussion, and voting on this matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time? Okay. D, approval of the minutes of the zoning and land use commission of the regular meeting of November sixteenth, two twenty twenty-three.
So move, Mr. Chair? Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mr. Bogard. All approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Communications?
None, sir.
All right. F, new business. Planned building group Cypress Court Duplex, sixty-two eighty-three Alma Street, Cypress Court Apartments. Mr. James Cantrell, someone's representing them. Name and address, sir.
Good evening. Brandon Arsenault of Total Project Services, two-nine-four Meadowview Court, Thibodeau, Louisiana. I'm representing a landowner here, Cypress Court Apartments, and Mr. James Cantrell is their manager here. He's here as well. What we have before you is a, it's already a standalone tract of land. It's not in any redivision or anything like that. It's a zero-point-nine-nine-one acre tract of land near the intersection of West Side Boulevard in Alma. So if you turn on Canadas, go down West Side, two stop signs down, you hit Alma. You turn left, there was a convenience store on the corner, and then there's an open little track on your right-hand side, just before you get to Magnolia Courtyard. So that kind of lays the land of where we at right there. This, this tract of land is in zone R three. The applicant would like to propose and add some duplex units right there. Single-family, single-story units. Looks like we're gonna have five duplexes or ten units, spaced about sixteen feet apart. Each unit would be seventy by forty-three is what we're looking at right now. And when I say unit, the building, the duplex as well. So it's right about fifteen hundred square foot per unit. We propose, and we know we ought to handle drainage. There's a large drainage outfall ditch on a common, on the southern common property line. There's a fire hydrant, fire protection, about two-hundred feet going towards Alma on the next lot corner from this property. We're gonna have a driveway going down to the back, providing adequate parking, two parking stalls for each unit. They said it's just a driveway going to the back. It's not public engineer, turnover to the parish for operation and maintenance or anything like that. To the best of my knowledge, we meet all the setback requirements, which is five feet on the side. We proposing to be some ten feet, thirty feet in the rear, twenty-five feet up front, and five feet on the other side. But we have a driveway there, so plenty, plenty far enough off that property line. So being that there's no other comments, we seek an approval of this application.
You got it. I'll just open it up to the public. Just real quick, anybody from the public want to speak on this? No one? Okay. Administration? No, it's, it's...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just so you know, I think Becky's working on getting the site plan uploaded and onto the screen, but it is in your packets and on your iPads and so forth. But I'll go ahead and jump into the staff report. This is a proposal is placement of five duplexes for a total of ten units on a single parcel located at sixty-two eighty-three Alma Street in an R three district. The property is adjacent to residential townhouse development and an apartment complex. The proposed duplex meets most of the requirements of chapter twenty-eight, article five, section ninety-two of the parish zoning ordinance as it pertains to drainage. Now, the final drainage plans will be approved as part of the building permit. Vehicular and pedestrian circulation, off-street parking, and building spacing. And I say most because Bayou Kane Fire Department has reviewed the proposed site plan and will require sufficient turnaround at the end of the driveway. The specifications have been sent to the developer to incorporate those into the site plan. There is sufficient space for a play area, there, there you go, in the rear yard, provided, provided that the fire, I'm sorry, provided that the required fire truck turnaround will allow for it, or the play area could be relocated to another suitable and safe location on site. Staff recommends approval on the condition of submittal of an approval letter from Bayou Kane Fire Department. And today, there was, you know, an email from Chief, Chief Hill at Bayou Kane that we forwarded to the developer to, and to Brandon that had all of the NFPA requirements for the fire truck turnaround. So it's just a matter of incorporating those. I mean, there is sufficient room in that rear yard setback, and they can construct the fire truck turnaround within that setback. It's, that setback is a building setback.
Okay. Thank you, administration. Any comments from the commissioners? If no comments, looking for a motion. Uh, Mr. Bogard's first.
Yes. Can you remind me where that hydrant was in relations to this plan? Now that we're looking at the plan?
We have a G I S.
It's on Alma, huh?
Yeah, it, the hydrant would be on Alma, and I did talk to Chief Hill about that as well. And as far as the hydrant goes in his correspondence to the, to us, comment number two, input on fire hydrant locations, he's, Chief Hill states that we will require additional fire hydrants to be placed. I know this is not the phase for that input, but I just want it on record that we will require hydrants. So again, like the drainage, the fire hydrants would be part of the building permit process.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. T-
Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, you know, subdivision regulations have to do with two-hundred-and-fifty foot, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there, if there's a hydrant right there, which I believe there is one within the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot range, you know, that's, that's not something that the planning commission necessarily would be involved in, but it would be something that fire code and building code would address at the time of building permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Thibodeau?
No, sir, I'm good.
All right. Any other comments or a motion?
I make a motion to approve as per staff recommendations for the condition of the bike game.
I second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mr. Bogard. All approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Congratulations. Staff report?
No staff report for zoning, sir.
Commissioner comments? Mr. Thibodeau?
Yeah, yeah, man, I didn't want to ask it then, but I, I noticed the paperwork says one-point-zero-nine-nine acres, and he said something different. He said less than one point, he said zero-point-nine-nine or something of that sort. But the real question I got when I look at the cost, how do we, you know, I think ours was twenty-five dollars per permit per acre. How does that stack up with places like Lafayette or, or, or other, other areas in terms of our cost?
No, I'd, I'd have to check into that. I mean, approximate cost of the work involved, they have listed at two-point-three million.
I think he's talking about the application fee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That is twenty-five dollars per acre.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah. And, and I only ask that, obviously, we spend, we, the parish spends a lot of resources on these projects, and, and I, I, I know the cost of the project. Does, does that also drive, I guess, something to terrible parish consolidated government? And if not, it's just the permitting cost. And I, I know we spend a lot more money than, than that. I don't know that we should be recovering our total cost, but when you look at the resources the parish send on these projects, including engineering, it just seems like a paltry sum. And I, I would, I would ask to see how our counterparts are, are charging out on these, these costs, and maybe let us know at a later date.
Definitely.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Uh, any other comments, commissioners? Public comments for the zoning? I need a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Thibodeau. All approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. So motion passes.
You got to initial all of your processes. That was from last month.
Oh.
Just wherever. That's why we embarrassed the coin on the charger. We didn't turn it back in. Thank you.
I got initial too, because I didn't either.
No, we just need one initial.
Okay.
Secretary Treasurer.
Got it. That one is, we didn't get to it yet.
That's on, uh...
All right. You want to pray this time? Anybody else? All right, we're gonna convene as the regional planning commission now. Once again, we will let Mr. Thibodeau have the prayer, and Mr. Smith will have the pledge.
Dear Lord, we thank You again for Your grace. We thank You again for Your mercy. And Lord, as we deliberate tonight, our last meeting of two thousand twenty-three in a season that recognizes all things related to You, we thank You for all that You've given us. We thank You for the parish, our state, and our nation. We thank You for the members in that service here. We ask that You continue to bless our deliberation and our decisions. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Becky Rowe called.
Mr. Burgord?
Here.
Ms. Ellander? Mr. Liner?
Here.
Mr. McGuire? Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Soudier? Mr. Thibodeau? We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Becky. Conflict disclosure. A reminder to the commissioners that at any time tonight a conflict of interest exists, arises, or is recognized as to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and to recuse himself or herself from participating in debate, discussion, and voting on this matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time? Okay. Approval of the minutes of the Homa Terrebonne Regional Planning Commission minutes for regular meeting, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So move, Mr. Chair?
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. A second by Mr. Smith. All approved. Aye. All oppose, I mean, all, yeah, all opposed, nay. Motion passes. E.
Yes, I move to approve the remittance of payments for the December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three invoices and the treasurer's report of November twenty twenty-three.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers.
Second.
A second by Mr. Bogard. All approved. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, nay. So motion passes.
And I'll also make a motion to accept and approve the proposed twenty-twenty-four budget.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers.
I'll second that.
A second by Mr. Bogard. All approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Okay, now we're gonna do our annual organizational meeting. Approval of proposed for the twenty-twenty-three audit. I need a motion for that. I have a motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
A second by Mr. Rogers. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Election of the officers. I need nominations.
I nominate Mr. Liner for chair.
Yes. I have a nomination for Mr. Liner for chairman.
A second.
I have a second.
Who's to close nominations for officer chair?
Uh, I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mr. Bogard.
Yep.
All approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Thank you. I need a-
We had a, a motion to close the nominations?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, now we need a motion to approve that nomination.
Okay. I need a motion to approve that nomination. I have a motion by Mr. Rogers.
I'll do a second.
A second by Mr. Bogard. All approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. So motion passes. So we're gonna have to do this every time. So now I need a motion for Vice Chair.
I open up motion for Vice Chair for Mr. Rogers.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers for Vice- I'm sorry. I have a motion by Mr. Bogard.
To elect Mr. Rogers.
Yes, sir. I have a motion by Mr. Bogard, looking for a second. I have a second by Mr. McGuire. All approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Now I need a motion to, uh-
I make a motion to close those nominations.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Bogard. A second by Mr. Rogers. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. And now I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve, uh, Mr. Rogers as that position.
I have a motion by Mr. Bogard. Second by Mr. McGuire. All approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. So motion passes. And now treasurer.
Secretary and Treasurer.
Secretary and Treasurer.
I nominate Ross Burgord for Secretary.
I have a motion by Mr. Bog, I'm sorry, I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. I have a, I need a second.
Second.
A second by Mr. Smith. All approved. Aye. All, all opposed, nay. So motion passes. And now I need a motion to approve.
Close nominations.
So move, so move to close nominations.
Okay, so I have a motion to close nominations by Mr. Rogers. Second by Mr. Bog, I'm, Mr. McGuire. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. And then we got one to approve, Mr. Bogard. That's the last one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Rogers to, to approve Mr. Bogard, and I need a second. I have a second by Mr. Smith. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, that's once a year. That is rough. That is a lot. What? Yeah, I agree. I agree. Sheesh. All right. I need a motion for take old business. Okay, that's a good one. Communications. I got it. Communications, you have anything? Administration?
Yes.
Okay. Well, number one, I was just telling BJ that even the tree board has trouble with nominations and elections. So like, you're not alone in that. Every board, every board stumbles when it comes down to nominate and elect.
You comparing this to the tree board?
Yes, I am. We at, we have seven tree board members, and I can't remember the last time we had a full tree board. I'm, I'm so excited about that. Okay, so moving on. Communications. So I do have a letter from Ken Rembert dated today. Dear Chris, please let this letter serve as a request to leave the above item on the table at tonight's meeting and place it on the agenda for the next meeting. The plans for the proposed dry hydrant planned for this property are incomplete at this time, and this is pertaining to old business item number two, the Eric Newman property.
Thank you, administration. Any more communication? Is that it?
That is all.
Okay. I need a motion to take old business off the table.
I move.
Can we clarify what we're taking off? There's two items.
The first, the, the second one just got, just tabled.
No, because we already addressed, um, H two.
I understand, but you still need to either continue the hearing or something. Don't you hear.
We, we're tailing it per-
As per the developer's request. It is.
It's all. No action required.
No action required.
No, we should have had a most-
Oh, a motion under communications. That's what Mr. Wayne is saying.
We're still in communications.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
We need to make a motion to table per developer's request.
There you go, Mr. Wayne. Thank you.
We're still in communication.
Got it. So, all right, so we need a motion per administration recommendation of table. Got it?
Per developer's-
Per the developer's request.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Rogers.
Second.
A second by Mr. Bogard. All approved.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Okay.
So now we will only be removing old business item-
H one.
Got it.
Two dozen.
Now I need a motion to approve of taking old business off the table. I have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by-
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Thibodeau. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Yes, sir. Name and address.
David Wade, seventy-eight thirty-nine Park Avenue, representing the owner for the Evangeline Oaks subdivision. And we're here to request the final approval tonight.
Okay. All right. Ms.
A final inspection for Evangeline Oaks was held by representatives of the Department of Public Works. The following punch list items remain and need to be addressed. The ditches in the rear of lots, block one, lot six to thirty-eight, and fifty-three to eighty-three need stumps, fallen trees, and branches removed. Warranty items from the previous Evangeline subdivision have not been completed. This first subdivision, this applies to, dates back to July of twenty twenty. This is for informational purposes. Roads, Rue Jean-Luc, Rue Evangeline, Rue De Affair, replace cracked curves and cracked panels. Utility, streetlights do not have power. And I believe we can, I mean, it doesn't have to be pulled off tonight, but I, I think the roads have been completed, just for informational purposes.
Administration?
Well, administration recommends approval on the condition that applicant agrees to meet all the items on the punch list.
We, we would like to, just on item number four, is to post a bond for the hooking up the lights. The lights have been installed, and it's just for energy, who has been paid by the developer to install the power, and they're out there installing it, but it's not complete yet. So as far as everything else, we will comply with, and most of it has been applied with already, except for the power, because it's beyond our control, and we like to post a bond. There's thirty-one streetlights out there, and we came up with a cost proposal or a bond cost of a thousand dollars per light. It's thirty-one thousand with a twenty-five percent increase for the hundred-and-twenty-five for, for posting a bond for the unfinished work. So that's gonna be a total of seventy-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty, fifty dollars to post a bond for that item.
On the, I'm sorry, Mr. Wade, it's the, and, and you're welcome, but the, the, the dollar amounts on the email that we received was thirty-one thousand, streetlight completion, seventy-seven fifty is twenty-five percent, so the total amount's thirty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. You said seventy, seventy thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty. So again, you're welcome.
My bad. Thirty-eight thousand, thirty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. My bad.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Christmas come early for David Waits.
Okay. Any commissioners' comments or a motion? Mr. Thibodeau?
Yes, sir. Mr. Wade, just to make sure I understand you, I think there was a little pushback on your part with regards to the stumps and all.
That's off the, that's off the item. That's been, been pulled off the list. Okay.
I just want to make sure. All right. Thank you.
They are quite pretty.
This is post last meeting?
Uh, I took these about a month ago, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau.
Yeah, I think I took it right after the last meeting.
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept as per staff recommendation.
I have a motion by Mr. Bogard and a second by Mr. Rogers. All approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Congratulations.
Merry Christmas.
You too. Aye, new business.
Yeah, roll on.
RPA Campus Roads. Yes, sir.
Well, I, I didn't hear it get past that point. I'm, I apologize.
You're okay.
Jane Milford with Milford and Associates at fifteen-thirty-eight Polk Street here in Homa for the RPA Campus Roads. This is the engineering approval. And generally speaking, I usually let Joan read first.
Mr. Joan?
The engineering division of Terrebonne Parish Department of Public Works has reviewed the plans and calculations for the above reference subdivision. The plans and calculations failed to comply with parish ordinances and subdivision regulations in the following areas. Does not conform to the SDDM. Discharge is not limited to ten-year, twenty-four-hour pre-development rate, and there are no calculations showing that there are no adverse impacts. Hydrographs need to be provided. Inlet spacing and gutter calculations need to be provided. Letters and/or signed plaits need to be provided from the following: electric utility, pollution control, gas utility, Department of Health and Hospitals for water and sewer, and approval from TPCG utilities for the streetlights should be provided.
Administration?
Staff would recommend approval on the condition that applicant agreed to meet all the items on the punch list.
All right. Commissioner comments or motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve on the condition that applicant agrees to meet all items on the TPT.
And accept the bond?
And accept the, no, the bond. There's no bond.
That was a previous item.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. Yep, I'm getting there. Mr. Thibodeau?
Yeah, I just wanted to put Mr. Milford on the record. Do you agree?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Little, little shuffle there. But yes, we do agree that we're gonna resolve or comply all the items in it that's on the punch list for this project. I just wanted, if y'all have a moment, a little bit about, about the project. I don't know if y'all are familiar with the RPA project. This is the remotely piloted aircraft of the unmanned aerial service complex that the airport commission's been working on for quite some time. Part of these roads, part of Thunderbird Road, as well as Blue Angel Road, that's the boulevard that's coming off the highway, that was built under a previous planning commission. This is a continuation of it. We did not bring those roads for final back then because partly me, mainly because they're still gated off. This is the, for security of the airport. When people, you know, come off the road and they can well on their way away and easily get onto the taxiway and be out in the middle of the, the runways and use it for a drag strip right when aircraft come in and landing. So it's, it's been gated off, and there's another project the airport commission's working on, securities and, you know, some of the gates and things like that. But this project will, will continue Thunderbird Road. So when it's done, we'll have Thunderbird Road connected all the way through, as well as some additional roadways that are coming down. This is the one you see on the, on your left-hand side as you look at it, that be a kind of hook that comes into the apron that's already built. They said this is gonna be facilitating some additional buildings and things like that are gonna come in to really expand what the Homa Terrebonne Airport has, which nowhere else has on the Gulf, entire Gulf Coast. There's a number of MOUs working out with Nichols and Louisiana Tech University and other, other companies as this project moves forward. And now they're starting to move into the CEAs, the cooperative endeavor agreements, to really step up and move from there. This really is creating a really fascinating project. Like I said, this, this is stuff that we are so far ahead of any other aircraft, airport, anywhere in the region. So it, it really, kudos goes out to the airport commission for all the hard work they've been doing behind the scenes for many, many years. And we've come on board. We've been working on this in two thousand seventeen. So there's a lot of stuff that's gone into it. There's a lot, a lot of neat things that are gonna be happening at the airport and really bringing in some new business into Terrebonne. And, uh, really bring in some new business, uh, into Terrebonne Parish.
That's great news, man.
Anyway, I just wanted to let you know what's happening.
Yeah, can, can, is there?
We have so many questions to speak.
Mr. Bogart?
I have the light. Right?
I didn't take it off.
Okay. I'm sure. I mean, I, unless you took me off, let me know. Is, is there, is there a way to get a tour? Tour with you or to, to get an up close look at, at some of the stuff you just explained?
I'm, I'm sure there is. Um, you know, right now is, is mainly just some concrete streets and aprons. Uh, but, um, the airport commission, uh, Earl Hicks, he's the, the manager, or either Mert Pellegrin, either one of them would be more than happy. Uh, to sit down and, and really go into some very good detail and talk about the different types of aircraft. The CTalls and some of the things that are, that are happening there.
And it's unmanned stuff is gonna be professional stuff, I guess drone.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, you know, they're still working with the FAA, working on a lot of the rules. So a lot of these aircraft are still technically gonna be manned. But they'll be done autonomously. And so there's lots of really neat things that are happening.
Yeah, um, I had the honor of, uh, speaking with Mr. Mert Pellegrin at the Chamber Christmas luncheon a few days ago. And he gave a great presentation on this. And not only are we talking about unmanned aircraft, completely autonomous. But some of it is manned aircraft, but some of it is hybrid. Some of it's fully electric. What's really interesting is that all of this is dovetailing in with Fletcher. Because not only is Terrebonne becoming the hub for this type of activity. Um, but also you, you gotta have people to work on this aircraft. So they're creating a whole new industry. Um, for people to be able to not only pilot, but service this aircraft. And y'all, I mean. The airport, I don't think a lot of people realize, but Homa Terrebonne Airport. After New Orleans International is the highest rate of, of, of trips per day. Now, when you talk, because of PHI and all the helicopter trips going out of there. Now fixed wing, it drops down a little bit. I think we might be seventh on the list in the state. But when you talk about just total trips, um, it's second in the state after New Orleans International. If you talk about specifically helicopters, we're number two in the world. After Aberdeen, Scotland, which is crazy. Uh, I mean, it's just incredible, uh, uh, what's happening out at the airport. And I just don't think. The general public realizes it yet. And Mr. Mert, Ms. Andrea would be the ones to contact out there to get that tour and they'd love to talk about it.
One of those numbers in use since Fuchon no longer has helicopters going on.
Well, they talked about that Tuesday because a lot of the, um, uh, helicopter companies are consolidating into the Homa area for a myriad of reasons. But I mean, when you think about that, those guys are bringing in, I mean, their hotel stays, restaurants, you know, all of that stuff that goes along with it. Cause some of those folks are coming in for days or time. And look, it's not just that too. I mean, it's executive travel as well because. They have, uh, they're looking to expand the runway, because of course the runways were built in the forties. Um, and they were built to accommodate the twenty thousand pound aircraft or whatever it is. And now it's, you know. Almost a hundred thousand, right? It's just huge. But they had a plane that flew from Homa to Italy. It took nine hours to get there. They had to take on fifty-seven hundred gallons of fuel in Homa. And when I did my expert Google search on my phone, jet fuel is six fifty-four a gallon. That's like thirty-seven thousand dollars that, that whoever that was spent on fuel on that one trip. That's one way. Yeah, right. So, you know. Rachel might be able to explain a little bit more being a United Flight Attendant now, but, uh, yeah, I mean, that's just. It, it's, I think it's great what's happening out at the airport. And I just don't think the people at Terrebonne Parish realize it yet. Yet.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bogart.
Yes, uh, so, yeah, Chris basically answered some of that as far as the industry is the benefit from this. Uh, but, uh, I guess more specifically, uh, a non-manned, uh, vessel. Uh, are they targeting certain industries that, uh, would be used with these devices, these crafts and stuff, uh, to say, is it mostly oilfield? Or is that even, uh, discussed yet?
Me, um, the, there's a lot of different industries and for a lot of different, uh, ways that are being done. Of course, that is one. But there are a lot of different things and, and Mr. Mert Pellegrin and they can give you a, a good detailed understanding. But yes, sir, it's, it, it covers a lot of different industries. And there's some places that are have, are working, they're doing autonomous air taxis. When I stop and think about that, you, you can. Not here, but that's what some of the things that they're working on.
Not ready yet.
Thank you.
Pipeline surveys was one Mert talked about. I mean, yeah, I mean, the, the, there's a lot of levy surveys. You know, there's a lot of, uh, uses that they could have out there besides just the oil and gas offshore.
Yeah, cause I know that they have, uh, equipment that is more than just visual.
Yeah. I don't know if I wanna ride on a, on an unmanned aircraft as a passenger. I don't think I'm there yet.
No, me either.
I see too many movies.
Not in this country yet, but I wouldn't be surprised. I mean, think about, I think what George Jetson was supposed to have been born last year. I mean. So I'm thinking about it.
I'll ask Rosie when I get home.
Alright. To get us back on track, we did have a motion by Mr. Rogers.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Bogart. All approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Thank you and thank you for telling us about it. We appreciate it.
Y'all have a merry Christmas.
That was enlightful. Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Milford, uh, I just wanna offer condolences on the loss of your father.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I, I dealt with him when I was on the waterboard, so a good man.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, yeah.
And services are this Saturday from?
Services this Saturday at the, uh, First Baptist Church on, uh, three eleven. A visitation, uh, this is in the morning.
Yeah, I think it's nine to eleven.
Nine to eleven, uh, service will follow after that.
Yep, sorry to hear that, Mr. Milford.
Thank you.
Alright, s- staff report discussion and possible action regarding a change to the twenty twenty-four HTRPC meeting schedule and deadlines?
We got Becky.
Um, I mean, you don't, you don't need to live. It's just, we're changing, um, in the bylaws, we have to have meetings every. In the bylaws, it states we have to have meetings every third Thursday of the month. So it's not something that you usually have to approve because it's in the bylaws. But we will be changing the February meeting to the fourth Thursday due to it being Mardi Gras week and Chris being out all week. So we do need to approve the change from the third Thursday to the fourth Thursday in February.
Get my fix.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was.
Yes.
So we need a motion right now to approve that change. Got it? Alright, I need a motion?
I'll move to, uh, change the date of the February, uh, third Thursday to the February fourth Thursday.
It'll be February twenty-second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mr. Bogart. All approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. So motion passes.
And my kids and family, thank you.
Yeah. Well, bring us back something. Uh, administrative. Alright, administrative approvals, uh, K.
I'll move items K one through seven.
Have a motion by Mr. Rogers?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Mr. Bogart. All approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Committee report?
No reports, sir.
Okay. Commissioner comments? Mr. Smith?
Well, I, I got one question really. Um, so I kinda inadvertently got a phone call from a guy about, uh, a base. A military base being built in Terrebonne Parish.
That would be amazing.
That, that might be, uh, um, I do recall Mr. Mert saying at one point, at one presentation, this was a while back. That, uh, some of the unmanned aircraft are decommissioned military aircraft. Now whether or not that's still the case.
It gets better.
Oh.
The military base was for the Space Force.
Oh. I have no knowledge of that.
Uh, not that I'm aware.
Would y'all tell us?
Yeah, it might be sworn a secret word.
Reading y'all faces, see if y'all look left means y'all not telling the truth.
And, uh, the other thing was, I'm seeing more and more people walking on major thoroughfares where we have no sidewalks. We have to become more, uh, pedestrian friendly moving forward. Um, it just seems like fewer people are buying cars or can afford cars.
Yeah.
And watching people walk in places where the speed limit is like fifty-five, we, we have no, no barrier for safety for those people.
Yeah.
That's just a comment I have.
What's, what's your thoughts? More like a downtown area versus like an MLK area?
Well, not, not just MLK, like, um, how we just got the, um, the sidewalks in great, going north from HL. Now I'm watching kids cross over MLK and they're walking down tunnel. So they're coming from Terrebonne, Homage High. We have all these apartment complexes on MLK. That's nowhere. There's no crosswalks, there's no sidewalks. And it's, they're just barreling down the road. So if a kid steps out there, God bless him.
Well, not only that, in, in those areas too, it's not highly lighted areas on top of that. So if it's, if it's dark, it's even ten times worse.
Especially right now, yeah.
So, so this comment or response is for you guys, but for anyone watching at home. So, uh, right now our MPO, which is South Central Planning, they have, um, open a public survey. Where you can go on and online and it's really easy to do it on your phone, actually. Actually, it's easier to do it on your phone. And you can, uh, place comments about, it's, it's our master transportation plan, uh, which includes our pedestrian and bicycle safety. So you can pick different areas and you can comment on that and you can drag in icons to certain areas. Like if you think there's a stretch of road that has pedestrian issues, like no sidewalks. You click the, you know, pedestrian icon, drag it to a spot on the map. And then you just type in need sidewalks or something to that effect, right? Um, but at the same time, so that survey's out there and they're collecting that input. But, you know, we do have MPO meetings that are held. I mean, depending upon which committee or which meeting you're going to, they're pretty much almost every month. Um, but, you know, that's something that we can take back to them, but I would certainly encourage all of you to attend. I know I've seen Mr. Wayne. I know I've seen Robbie and, and several others at those meetings. Um, and that they're held, well, sometimes they're at. South Central Planning's office, sometimes they're at the north branch of the library, but we can get that schedule of meetings out, but I think it'd be excellent for y'all to attend. Cause they, they need to hear it from you guys. I mean, Joan, Brooke, BJ and I, we're there all the time, but to have a, a planning commissioner show up at that meeting and, and state that. I think would carry a, go a long way. And they're, and they're always looking for new projects. I mean, we have the new safe routes for all. It's not safe routes to school. Safe routes to school became safe routes to public places became safe routes for all. So that program has evolved and it been broadened. So, yeah, I think it's, that's how those sidewalks on Highway twenty-four were put in.
Really? So there's a certain budget?
Yeah, I think February might be the, I'm sorry, might be the deadline for the twenty twenty-four round of applications. So, you know, we could get you the information and, and you guys, yeah, we'll send it around.
Is, is it a certain budget? What you're talking about, is it a certain budget every year that they can?
Five hundred thousand, I think is the project max, but, um, I mean, I don't know what the MPO has. But there's usually a public match requirement with it, but, I mean, we oftentimes combine that with other funds too, so.
Okay. Mrs. Smith, you good?
I'm good. Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Bogart?
Yes, uh, where does the planning and zoning, uh, stand as far as the, the topic of where we stand on the flood map? Because this is a situation that I, I feel, uh, is, we, we do our due diligence to improve our parish. But if, if we don't have anybody left here because they can't afford to live here, then I, I think that this levy situation and flood map. Uh, is the most important thing we need to try to resolve so we can keep people here.
So the planning and zoning department, of course, you know, we have a new administration coming in. So, you know, I'm talking with Jason. All the time about this and other, other topics, but as it pertains to the flood maps, there are two issues, you know, that we're dealing with. There's the flood maps. And there's the flood insurance rates. So with respect to the flood insurance rates, there's litigation ongoing. That the state of Louisiana and nine other states are involved in. And, uh, although we haven't received. The formal, uh, ruling from the judge from the September fourteenth hearing. Uh, it's looking like things are starting to move into our favor, but we haven't heard anything formal. It's kind of. I guess conjecture on the AG's office at this point. But, um, as, as it goes back to the, the maps themselves, so. Before the September seventh adoption date, you know, Gordy had asked us to get involved with Aptum. Which is the consulting firm that helped us through the entire, uh, lamp process, which is the. Levy analysis and mapping where we started feeding FEMA information about all of the work we've been doing parish wide. Um, about our levies and drainage systems. But the problem with the maps was FEMA cut us off in July of twenty nineteen. So we brought in Aptum to basically help us. We're in the process of putting together our own community flood maps. It's called a CLOMER. Community letter of map provision. So, uh, we, Aptum since August has, has been working on that, getting data. First they did a review, a detailed review and analysis of the maps themselves. They identified not only, yes. You know FEMA has not included these things, but they found some other. Spots that we need to focus on. So we picked two panels to use as like a beta test. So now Aptum is getting information from all of the levy districts and the parish and so forth. And then we're gonna put together a computer model for those two panels. And we're meeting with FEMA in the latter part of February. We're gonna go to FEMA. Whether it's Denton, Texas or Washington DC, we're not a hundred percent sure yet. But we're gonna go there and meet with them in person. To explain our strategy about how we're handling this CLOMER. And then we're gonna move forward with them. Um, and it's about a twelve to eighteen month process. So we're hoping that by the end of next, end of twenty twenty-four. Or early part of twenty twenty-five, we may have new flood maps that Terrebonne Parish prepared. That are as accurate and up to date as possible. But I mean, when FEMA did those. They're doing them at a certain scale, right, of, of detail. So whenever somebody's right on the line, if they wanna adjust it and they think, oh, you think it's worth me going to get a LOMER? We'll take a look at it and we can't tell them for sure if they're gonna get it or not, but we say, okay, well, you might stand a good chance. I know of people along Val High, say for example, along in Summerfield subdivision. Sleka just bought a bunch of property across from. By Country Sports Park entrance off of Val High. That was in a flood zone in the new maps. They did a, a LOMER on their own. It's outside. Cause they were able to zoom in and really look at that property at that scale, not twenty thousand foot level. And there've been people in Summerfield who've been able to do the same. And, and a LOMER, as I understand, I mean, you know, you gotta get a surveyor to do the, the, the site. Shoots and things like that for you, but it's not terribly expensive. It's certainly cheaper than the flood insurance rates that I'm seeing. So, um, it may be worth it for some people and I would encourage anybody who's considering it to contact the permit office at eight seven three six five six seven. And ask to speak to one of our floodplain managers to talk about it because they can give them some guidance. But we're working on getting new maps. And, uh, so far things are looking pretty good. I mean, Derek. Derek and I are on those calls, um, monthly. We, every, every week we get an update. Yep, and bi-weekly reports, but I mean, the, the documents are real time. So every time they update something, we're seeing it. And Jason and his new, uh, administration, our new, uh, chief administrative officer, Noah Lee Ret. Um, uh, 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 Ryan Page, um, they're all watching this closely with us too. Yeah, Michelle Neal, new parish attorney, so, um, it's moving along.
I'm good. Thank you for explaining that.
Very encouraging.
Mr. Thibodeau?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I'm not necessarily a guy that likes to toot my horn, but doing my councilmatic tenure from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand six. The sidewalks you see from Lafayette Street going west where it connects to the tunnel shoulder. The sidewalks from Mobile Estate all the way up to the city of Tibbetto, city limits, they were all done under my instigation and with the help of South Central Planning and through the State Transportation Enhancement Grant. So that's why, that's how we got money to do all of those sidewalks. And I, I don't know if those grants are still available.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but uh, you know, that is a way for, for the councilmen and, and concerned persons to maybe uh, get with South Central Planning and, and get them to file those grant applications for them. And perhaps we could, that is one way. You know, we did get some budgeted money from the parish to do it. But the, those were my plans, instigated by me. There's only one part of that was not fulfilled. And that sidewalks from uh, intersection of twenty-four north to Lost Bay on, on Highway three sixteen. So that is still a very dangerous pedestrian uh, path. There's a lot of pedestrian activity there. But I don't know what to hold up with the sidewalks there. So we had talked to you about it briefly, but I've never gotten an update on it.
That's under design.
Ma'am?
It's under design.
Very good. Good to hear that. I'll let the people know. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Alright, Mr. McGuire?
Chris, I was just, uh. Yes, sir. Would there be any waivers as far as that, those fees for individuals having to pay for, let's say, surveying of their properties?
For the LOMER?
Yes.
No, sir. That's a, you know, unfortunately, that's something that the property owners would have to, that expense they'd have to incur. And I, I'm not sure what the going rate is. I, I'd hate to throw a number out, you know, and, and, and be incorrect, but uh.
Well, it's just the, the fact of how much um, how much money is actually being spent by the homeowners these days? Just with the flood insurance. So having to come back and then do a survey of.
Well, I'm not in a flood zone and my flood rate renewal was thirty-six hundred dollars. Which was more than my SBA loan balance, so I let my flood insurance go. Paid off the SBA loan, so.
Mr. McGuire, you good?
Yes.
Mr. Bogart?
He might. I can just, I think I can answer one of your questions.
I'd like him to go because it's gonna pertain to that.
Okay, go ahead.
I uh, and this wouldn't apply to everyone, but I actually was looking into possibly applying for a LOMER. And I was told it would be around five hundred dollars or so to apply personally for a LOMER. Cause after you get the surveyor and application and everything, using all the FEMA, about five hundred dollars for a resident to do that.
Mr. Bogart?
Yeah, so uh, just for clarity, uh, uh, my question to Chris. Uh, the LOMER uh, would be an individual task that you would do. Uh, but in due time, uh, y'all are working at, on a parish level that would encompass anybody in the parish. Am I correct in saying that?
That's correct. Um, but even the level of scale and detail that the parish CLOMER will be at may not be at the level of accuracy that an individual could do. So what I'm getting at is there may still be people, even after we're done with ours, that could benefit from a LOMER on their own. So if somebody has the time, like if they're on the gliding scale that, okay, well, maybe not this year, maybe not the following year, but maybe two or three years from now. Um, they might be in a, in a spot where they might not be able to afford that flood insurance. If maybe they just wait one year or whatever, so that, give us time to get our CLOMER together. They may find that they're out of the flood zone altogether anyway, and then it won't cost them a dime, right? But if, you know, if, if there's a sale of the property involved or something like that, that's on a tighter timeframe, then then maybe a LOMER might be worth it.
Alright. Thank you.
Alright. Any more commissioner comments? That was some good stuff, guys.
And we'll, we're gonna go ahead and send you all the link to that survey I was talking about, so.
And schedule for the MPO meeting?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay, no more commissioner comments. Uh, public comments? No one to give one of those? Need a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Rogers. All approved, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Yep, sorry, Merry Christmas.
I may be back next month.
Hey, did we get checks this week?
Can you, is that on the link?
Yeah, Becky.
That's uh, Ross and Tradyon.
Yeah, I need the link. I hadn't seen it.
You didn't do your sexual harassment.
Do we get paid? Is it on the, is it on the ethics side? Cause I was looking for it.
Check, not the. Let me see.
I, I sent you the link on the email to get, it's on you.
Could you send it again?
Of course I can. I double.
Hey, Robbie, you handing out those checks or what, man? Trying to keep that ass money for yourself?
Uh, haircut. I'm falling behind. Trying to make up my money. I actually, uh, I think, I think Becky. I think. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Look, I got them right here for y'all. Mr. Tibbet. Yeah, right here.
Is that the stuff now? Well, we're gonna be. You can let me know when you wanna do that and then I can come and. Chris was under the impression that he was gonna read.